Your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I never knew there was a rhythm to the pledge of allegiance. All right, what's next, Mr. Clerk? Councilmember Price.
Mr. President, I'm accusing myself from item eight because my wife's employer has worked with applicants on this item.
All right.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Isabel proved earlier that you can read the items off your screen, Marquise, and tell me which items I signed up for.
So again, which items would you like to speak to?
Which items did I submit on the kiosk, Marquise?
Okay, I'm gonna start your time now. You can have general public comment, or you can tell me which items would you like to speak to?
All items in general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Mister Gabriel, I just want to let you know, this is Councilmember Harris Dawson talking to you. The items you signed up for are not on my screen, so I can't help you with that. You need to do the work to remember when you come up to the desk.
Even Norrie got them off her screen.
Three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Even she can do it. So we have item sixteen, which is community services in CD twelve. So, let's see. So, what are these community services? It doesn't say what the community services are. You know, you can figure out what, you know, you can figure out what these community services are and let us know what they are. And then when you have that information, you can give it to us and then reschedule this item so that we can comment on what are the actual community services and not just the mysterious shit going on, given it's staffer B, probably LAPD funding. So, we have item eighteen, which is related to supplemental security services or something in various council districts. What are these security services being provided to do? I mean, it doesn't say what the security services are. And it seems, I mean, is it harassing unhoused people? Is it, you know, just basically off-duty cops being cops while off-duty? I mean, you know, we should figure that kind of stuff out. So we have item nineteen, which is related to sexual exploitation of children, things like that. We should also investigate the LAPD officers who are complicit, who are guilty of sexually exploiting children. And, I mean, we've got LAPD officers on the city council detail who advocate for child abuse. I mean, you know, and we've got, you know, all kinds of, there's all kinds of reports of LAPD officers doing these kinds of stuff. So we should launch some investigations into that kind of stuff so that we can figure out what's going on. Okay, and then, let's go to general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
So, once again, most of the council isn't here, most of the council isn't paying attention. As usual, Adrian's got his staffers, he's always late, he's never mentally present at any meeting he's at. Always chatting it up, laughing it up with the staffers. Well, most of you are playing on your computers. We've got Tracy and Karen over there just laughing it up. We've got, you know, all that kinds of stuff. So, when is call and comment, why was call and comment ever removed to begin with? We should have call and comment at these meetings so that people can give more public comment on their, you know, if people can't come here, they can call in to give comment. I think it's, I don't like hearing the hate speech, but it's, I'm a little worried you're gonna use this to expand, to ban all kinds, ban like criticism of Israel, things like that. So, yeah. You can get your items.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items in general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. Item fifteen is relative to funding to support the South Los Angeles Wetlands Improvement Project. It's always a good idea to fund and augment programs that support our wildlife and our ecosystems. I know LA is by and large an urban area, but our survival depends on a very delicate ecosystem balance. They seem insignificant, but the insects, the birds, they all have an effect on our livelihood. So thank you for supporting wetlands. I'd appreciate it if the council members engaged in conversation right now would pay attention. Thank you, Adrian. Item sixteen supports community programs and groups in Council District Twelve. This is really vague. It's an appropriation for $60,000. You know, the concept of community programs and groups is a good one, but it would be nice if we had more specificity on motions like this so we could keep better track of where our money is going. I think there's been a lot of information recently brought to light that the city and county organizations do a terrible job at keeping track of where funding goes. So if we would make more specific motions about this type of funding, that would be super helpful. Item seventeen relates to supporting the elderly. It's relating to funds for other aging grants, miscellaneous programs, modernizing the quote-unquote "Older Californians Act." Senior citizens is the fastest-growing demographic of unhoused residents. And the biggest thing we could do to support our elderly, our most esteemed citizens, would be to make their housing affordable, to ban landlords from price gouging them. My neighbor's on social security, she has a fixed income, but every year her rent control department still goes up by 4%, and she's really struggling. So this is a good goal, but it really falls short because we need much stronger protections. We need seniors to be able to stay in their housing and to be able to afford to have food and healthcare. Item nineteen is related to consistent consequences for those who engage in unlawful sex acts with a minor. This is about deterring sexual exploitation of children. Obviously, a good and noble cause. I think we should also look at ways that Hollywood and the movie and TV industry perpetuates the sexualization of children, the trafficking of children. They want to act very woke about these things now and pretend like they're protecting children, but the more we learn from former child actors, the more we understand that Hollywood is not a safe place for children. And so maybe we could consider banning child labor, and that would go pretty far in helping them.
General public comment.
Real hot girl shit. Pussy hoes on the horseshoe, nyum, doing what about traffic, pium? When I say traffic, I don't mean Bugattis. I'm talking about the people who force us to their bodies. This city's hosting the Olympics, men from all around the world want to buy tricks. Casey Wasserman knows something about it. Flew on Epstein Jet, innocent? Yeah, I doubt it. It's nothing but a racket for the city, and this council is behind it, such a pity. Marquise Harris Dawson want to act like he don't know. It's in your jurisdiction when we speak on Figueroa. Roa, 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 roa. The longest street in the city is Figueroa. Roa, 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 roa. Human trafficking up and down Figueroa. Roa, 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 roa. It's in your jurisdiction when we speak on Figueroa. Roa, roa, roa. My sincere apologies to Megan DeStallion. I know that was terrible. Someone requested I do that. Shout out to Smokey Scan and go check out Revolutionary Blackout Network on YouTube.
All I want to do is talk and say on item two.
One minute for general. Go ahead.
Item two, I stand with Herman Herman that I don't want the proliferation of alcohol sales. I'm moving on now. That woman's boyfriend likes Ron Johnson.
One minute for general. She just did item two. Sorry, go ahead.
Many people like Ron Johnson. The title of his book is Transhuman Genocide. And when I saw that title, I knew that's for me. We're talking genocide. Nobody's talking about what's really happening. Renee Pittman Mitchell is a black lady, and she's very religious. I was gonna bring her book. God is good, okay? I didn't bring it because I want to bring her picture also. They are hiding her. And what they did is they killed her, okay? I told one council member, and he has ability to look at her picture and say it's not her. I'm gonna bring her picture next Tuesday. And to show you, she's about forty-seven, she's a pretty lady. She's very religious, okay, very. And she even believes in that prosperity conscious, all the religious stuff. She also, anything that religious people, oh.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. If you allow me, I would like to try fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, general.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Start with item number fifteen. It's about the South Los Angeles Wetland Improvement Project. I am here to support this item because right here it specifically said appropriate $150,000 towards the recreation parks fund. In South LA, we need, definitely, we need better services at the park. Because the South LA parks have became a criminal sites already. Have became the wetland of gang bang already. And then, right now, we are providing more fundings to the recreation and the parks. And then, that's the reason why I'm here to support it. Because enough is enough. I cannot go to the park playing basketball at the same time I have to get raped in order to go home. That has to stop right there. Now, let's move on to item number sixteen. It's about a community programs in Council District Twelve. I am here to support these services because, like I mentioned last week, every single Los Angelinos, they deserve community prostitution services. And then, we are not seeing enough services right there. So the people who do not have enough access to sexual intercourse, they have no service. When they reach out to the council member, when they reach out to the city attorney, when they reach out to the LAPD, how can they have more accessible sexual intercourse services? They always get denied, they always get rejected. So, if we are trying to improve community services in Council District Twelve, I'm here to support the drug services, the heroin services, the marijuana services, and then the sexual prostitution services. Now, let's move on to item number nineteen. Number nineteen is about sex crime about the children. Like I mentioned many times already, I am always the advocate for Figueroa children, okay? I believe that I want to give the children the freedom of choice. If they want to do, if they want to become a prostitute, they have a constitutional right to do so. And you cannot take that away from a children. If a children wants to, if their American dream is to become a Figueroa prostitute, sex worker, and I believe it is their American dream to do so, and the city attorney, city council, mayor, whatever, you cannot take their American dream away. I am here to stand in solidarity with all of the Figueroa sex worker and the future sex worker of Figueroa. Now, let's move on to general. For the general, I will continue on my Figueroa item because even though our city attorney told me the Figueroa is not under the jurisdiction of the city council, okay? You can continue to say that, but I will continue to talk about Figueroa. I believe, right now, I have a concern about President Trump tariff. So, Figueroa is five dollar a head, and I don't want to see any tariff on Figueroa services. So if we have a 34% tariff, so five dollar per head on Figueroa Street, that will become seven dollar. That's unaffordable, that's unacceptable. So we need to make sure, we need to make sure, maintain the low price of Figueroa services to make sure the Figueroa services is accessible for every single Angelino. And then, regarding the tariff, and I want to consult our Figueroa President Jason Jenkins because he is the one who controls the Figueroa, and he is the one who provide all Figueroa services for every single Angelino.
General comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Francisco Aguirre. I am a Los Angeles, LAX employee for Cruz of California. Just wanted to speak about the Olympic wage. We needed to get agendized now. Olympic wage will help me save money, pay for personal medical debt, pay my car, be financially independent. It will be good for the economy. I just wanted to tell the city council members to schedule this now. That's all.
Hola, mi nombre es Maria Santos Gonzalez. Y trabajo para Flight Food Group, preparando la comida para todos los vuelos en LAX.
Hello, yes, my name is Maria Santos Gonzalez. I work for Flight Food Group, preparing all the foods for flights in LAX.
Estamos aquí porque necesitamos el sueldo olímpico.
We are here because we need the Olympic wage.
Yo hago veinte dólares con setenta y tres centavos y pago dos mil seiscientos de renta.
I make twenty dollars with seventy-three cents, and I pay two thousand six hundred dollars for rent.
Y cuido, tengo que cuidar a un nieto de mi, y yo vivo sola.
And I live by myself, and I have to take care of one grandchild.
Y no puedo jubilarme.
And I cannot afford to retire.
Hemos esperado demasiado.
We have waited far too long.
Por favor, les pido que pongan esto en la agenda lo más pronto posible, se los agradecemos.
And please, I ask that you agendize this as soon as possible. Please, we would be very grateful.
Es todo por hoy, gracias.
That's all for today. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Maria Romero. I work at LAX at Terminal One as a passenger coordinator. Been working there for eighteen years. I'm a single parent. For an eighty-year-old now, she's eight. Also a caregiver, me and my brother. We take care of our parents, mom and dad. I'm one of the biggest, the breadwinner. You know, things are really costly for us to take care of my dad and his needs. He's bed rest after a stroke. We don't get any help financially. Me and my brother take care of all his needs. My mother too. She's still, you know, she's doing good, thanks God. But she also needs clothes. Oh, shoot, okay, that was fast.
Sorry, I know it goes by quickly, so for everybody else, if you'd like to provide additional comments, you can do so at la council comment dot com in writing. And there is no word limit, as far as I'm aware of that. So, I'm sorry, we have to move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Yasmin Quino. I've been working at LAX Airport for eighteen years. I'm a wheelchair attendant. I am here to share that we need the Olympic wage to be on the agenda as soon as possible. Because when we wait, one bill adds more to my bills. Last week, I went to the emergency room, and I had to pay hundreds of dollars. Please, agenda the Olympic living wage and vote yes. Everything is getting so expensive, it's hard to pay rent, medical bills, groceries, gasoline. We need the living wage to be increased. It's not affordable no more in LA. Thank you.
Good morning, I'd like to speak on general comments. I'm concerned about our flags out here in front of City Hall. They all look terrible, every single one of them. It's a disgrace to our flag. If you guys would look into that, I'd appreciate that. As well as, half of you guys are up here not even paying attention to anybody that's speaking. There's a lot of people that are speaking up here that are important. Please pay attention to your speakers next time. Thank you.
I'm saying good morning, I'm Renata Mason with the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And today, I am here to speak on a reminder for those that have been impacted by the Eaton and Palisades fires. I just wanted to let you all know that our application deadline, we have a grace period. So for those that have been impacted by the disaster, you can apply now until May the thirtieth. With that being said, as a reminder, all those that have been impacted can apply by visiting sba.gov/disaster. For homeowners and renters, the assistance is available for renters, $100,000. For homeowners, up to $500,000 for rebuilding and reconstruction of your home with an interest rate of 2.563%. For nonprofits that have been impacted, we have an interest rate of 3.6, up to $2 million. And for businesses, starting at 4% for $2 million as well. Again, the application deadline is May the thirtieth for physical damages and October eighth for any economic injury. Thank you.
Yes, motherfucker, all items on non-agenda public comment.
Which name did you sign up under?
What do you mean, what name? All kinds of names.
Which name did you sign up under? Because you have to wait until your name is called before you can sign up or line up to speak. So, please let me know which name you signed up under, or you're going to be held out of order in disrupting this meeting. So which name did you sign up under? It does not have to be your actual name, but which name did you sign up under?
Marichoa, come on, come on. Marichoa, whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Marichoa.
And was that name called?
Can we repeat it one more time?
I'm sorry, Mr. Herman, which name did you sign up under?
Uh, Mata Choi, you motherfuckers.
Yes, that name was called.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Goddamn!
Go ahead.
Doesn't anyone listen? Do I repeat? Does anybody listen but Smokey Scan? Shout out!
So, your time is going, you need to stick to the items.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Item number six. Fucking assessment, fucking little Tokyo fucking business improvement district. Why, Mr. Duarte? Why did you let that poor Asian man get killed by LAPD? Why? Then we go to item number one. Dickhead. Which name, what name did you sign up under? All kinds of fucking names. Item number one, CD three, fuck CD three on item number one. Item number two, application for public convenience and necessity. We're gonna go to four AM on alcohol. Four AM last call.
So, Mr. Herman, that is not on the agenda, that is not what item two is about.
I'm relating it to the situation about public convenience and alcohol.
And connect it to item two, you know the rules.
It's not a necessity. We don't need anyone driving incapacitated and killing people on the goddamn road like that little kid that got killed earlier this morning, asshole. Look at item number three, noodle, noodle. Noodle, noodle, noodle. CD ten. Los Angeles fucking building and safety fucking report for confirmation for fucking liens. I keep telling you people, it's unconstitutional, three-inch dick, Duarte. That's the reason why I don't walk in here with my dick anymore, because I'm afraid that you're gonna hold me on those liens, Duarte, you little three-inch dick. And for that reason, I believe my violations of rights have been altered by the prior restraints, Mr. Attorney.
So, not on the agenda, you're welcome to speak to that during general public comment if you'd like.
I'm going to page number nineteen. Item CD nine fifteen, is it on the board? Check yourself before you wreck yourself, that's what that fucking monkey told me.
Number fifteen is $150,000 in funding to support the South Los Angeles Wetlands Improvement Project.
Yeah, may I speak on it, please?
Go ahead.
All right. Fuck item fifteen for the record. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, you laid it out for me. And Smokey Scan, yes, that little zit on his face, he should take it out.
All right, you've been warned before, general public comment, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Now, into my non-agenda public comment. Everyone in the world, look it up. Matthew Dowd, D-O-W-D, and Zuma Dogg said to you assholes of Los Angeles that Dean Pergerson says that my sensitive words may not be what protective speech, but they are. That's what the judge ruled. So when I say politely, noodle, 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 that's protective speech. If I grab my nuts, eeeeha! That's like Michael Jackson, just beat, beat, and beat it. And then I keep going on and on, but I'm not. K.K. Caruso and Stalin continue to have a conversation. So, 42SC, 1983 politely, fuck you, Groot, fuck you, Jonathan, and fuck the D-
Next speaker. Mr. Spindler, as you're walking up, I'd ask if you could let us know which name you signed up under as well, please. Thank you.
Why don't you guess?
So again, which name did you sign up under? If you don't want to tell us, then I'm gonna ask you, get back in line.
What? What do you mean?
This is your last opportunity. Which name did you sign up under?
My transgender name, Shelley Miskovich.
You are now disrupting the meeting, this is your first and only warning. I'm gonna ask you which name did you sign up under? The instruction to the gen- The instruction to the public is to wait until your name is called before you line up to speak. So, which name did you sign up under? You've already been warned once.
Shelley Miskovich, you're not listening, get that cotton out of your hair.
That name was called, yes.
Get your cotton out of your fucking hair.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, wasting my goddamn time. Now, number three, nigga, we're looking at nigga Bob and his niggas over there in the building of safety for annual inspection costs with almost $4,000 Benjamins. How can Monique allow her friend to go to prison over item number one? How can you let this happen? That's how you can let it happen. And then we get CD number five on number two. K.K. K. Kadyaroslovsky, the worst goddamn thing to happen to the Jewish community since Auschwitz been smoking, all right? We say no to number two. Look at this dumb city attorney. Item ninety-nine, I'm against. Item seventy-seven, I support. Item one ninety-four, I'm against. Item ninety-seven with amendments, I supported thoroughly. Item eighty-eight, I'm in favor of Marquez. Item one oh four, I'm against it, Marquez.
So this is your first and only warning. Stick to the agenda, or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Now we get number three, that's on top. CD ten, that little hustler over there, the unadected one, Heather Cunt-Hunt. And we say no to South Virginia Road, where all the wealthy niggas live. Did you know that? All the wealthy niggas live in South Virginia Roads. Does South Virginia Road a hint? That's right. It's still part of the ghetto, but it's the nice part. And then we get to number four, CD fifteen, that big fat ugly Irish buckethead doing South Pacific Gateway right-of-way. What you want to right-of-way, fool? Nobody wants to go down there. I say shut that goddamn road down. Don't anybody go to CD fifteen. Don't anybody shop down there. And all you Chinese folks, don't ship your goods through the port of Los Angeles.
All right, hold Mr. Spindler's time. Mr. Herman, do not disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only warning, or else you'll be subject to remo- Mr. Spindler. All right. Mr. President, Mr. Spindler has been warned. We paused his time, so this was not part of his general public comment, and he is eligible for removal if you'd like.
Or what?
Go ahead. For disrupting my instructions to Mr. Herman.
Oh.
Go ahead, continue your time.
I'm not Mr. Herman. So now we continue. We continue with our abated journey down this schedule. So let's see here, scumbag, let's go here to number fifteen. The wetlands, I piss on the wetlands, especially if it involves Karen DeMille Price and CD nine. No on the goddamn wetlands. Heck, I will challenge anybody to show me a single goddamn wetland that legitimately exists in that ghetto filthball place known as CD nine that I know all too well. Shout out to Seventy-Seventh and V.
General public comment.
Now we get to our general comment. I have good news for all of you. The FBI and the IRS have now joined our new federal task force on fraud involving homeless service stealing. And Nathia Ramenoodle is the top goddamn suspect. Let's give her a hand. It's gonna involve fines and imprisonment, money laundering, stealing. All because you niggas won't tell us what you did with our money. Where did my money from my streetlights go? Where did my money for my streetlights go, Amelda?
Well, it went into the circle.
Where did my streetlights go, bucket head?
Well, it went into my nonprofit.
And who did you house? Look at Amelda's district, in front of 405, 39 tents by the freeway. She only moving niggas around from one plantation to another, 42 United States Code. Fuck you, fuck the city, and fuck the-
Your time's expired?
For me, there is no greater moment in time for us to quickly accelerate our separation from Lhasa. The county has already done it. We need to continue to tee up our response in a manner that allows us to ensure that we don't have a break in outcomes. But there's clearly so much money invested in this, in so many different areas, with so much duplication and redundancies, it needs to stop. Because this apologist nature for this failure needs to stop. And I hope that this is actually going to help drive the momentum for us to finally have a system in place that will show deliverables clear and consistently without all of these continued exposures for the funding of the failure that has continued to happen for years. Time's up. And I look forward to the motion, the report coming back on centralizing our work in this city, because smaller cities can do it. There's no excuse for us saying that we can't do it. We're the damn city of Los Angeles, we should be able to do this. Thank you.
You know, Lhasa was created, as we all know, out of a lawsuit where this city and Lhasa were at odds. We were under the welfare code saying, you need to do your job with homelessness, you need to provide the human services, we're not getting those services. And one way that lawsuit was resolved was a settlement that created Lhasa. Well, now that we break Lhasa and they take their money back, we're back to that central question. Who does what? And I think it's important, as we move forward, that we not only, and this report not only tells us, as Ms. Rodriguez pointed out, we need to act quickly, because we're gonna get left behind, and figure out what it is that we need to do, how we create accountability. But we also need to figure out what is our role and what is their role? And make it real clear, because part of the problem in all this is the ambiguity that's been out there when it comes to homeless services. And we're spending our general fund on activities that the county spends their pass-through dollars and that fall in the lap of the county. So, you know, we need to, we don't want to just sit and wait and figure out what happens next, because we know what's happening. The county is gonna grab the best people that they can, is gonna gut Lhasa and take the folks who are good at contracting, et cetera, and move them into the county bureaucracy, hopefully not just creating another bureaucracy, but what's gonna be remaining is basically all paid for by the city. And we need to change things in Lhasa, whatever's remaining that we need to have, like the COCs and things that are determining policy that the county has a much greater voice than us, well, that has to change. Because we are now the only one paying into Lhasa. And we need to figure out how we extricate ourselves as well. And that's what this report is going to do, so I support the report, I support the amendments to the report, the more and better information that we can get and the faster that we can get it, because if we don't do something soon, it will be done to us in a way that we do not like. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez and Ramon for your leadership, and Councilmember Blumenfield as well. Colleagues, billions of dollars of taxpayer money have been wasted. Over the last several decades, we've gotten literally nowhere, doubling down on failure year after year. The county is now taking all of the Measure A funding. It's pulled its funding out of Lhasa and taken the human capital. Lhasa is now in a free-for-all, and we can probably expect HUD to be pulling out its funding of the city of Los Angeles as well. We are standing here, literally, holding the bag. But I'm viewing this as an historic opportunity to take back control of the spending and the accountability for how we are providing homeless services in the city of Los Angeles. I appreciate and support these motions and their amendments, and I would just like to offer the friendly additional amendment of getting these reports back in 30 days. Thank you, colleagues.
And thank you, Ms. Park, for that amendment. But I just wanted to clarify something, Mr. Blumenfield. Even though the county is pulling back its resources, Lhasa isn't going to cease to exist, it will still exist. It's just not going to exist with all of the revenue that was provided by Measure H when they were flooded, and then we matched that, those resources. So I wanted to just clarify that for anyone that thinks Lhasa is gonna go away. I mean, I don't, that's just not gonna happen. The other piece of it is, again, we are outreach-rich and housing-poor. We're clear what the roles are between the city and the county, there's no question about that. We're the housing providers, county's supposed to be the service providers. However, we've had a dynamic with the cart being put before the horse multiple times over, and we just have to start, like, this is the tightening of the belts that should have happened years ago, but everyone was, you know, hemming and hawing about, well, no, we can't do this, we can do this. It's not impossible, it's not difficult. It will be difficult for a lot of the people that have historically received funding without having to account for it, but the reality is, is this failure can no longer be enabled. And, you know, it should have happened a long time ago. And, you know, sadly, and I've said this in many meetings before, our constituents, LA city taxpayers, have continued to pay two to three times for services that they don't even get once. And that has been the problem associated with all of these multiple layers, from the state, from the federal, to the county, all of the resources that have been poured in to see minimal impacts. Oh, and by the way, Lhasa prematurely, absent full data and accounting, declaring victory on another reduced homeless count with incomplete data. It's a joke. And so we need to stop, you know, we need to move quickly, and I look forward to, again, that report coming back, so that we actually have a very thoughtful procedure going forward with greater accountability, outside a political office leading it, to centralize this work so that we can actually have meaningful results on the street. Thank you.
Gosh, I did not expect that this item would generate so much interest, but I'm delighted that everyone is so excited to get this report back about how we respond to the county's unilateral decision to remove Measure A funding, from many of which our city representatives and city residents supported and voted for out of Lhasa. I think that we are at a very important moment with this change. And I want to be very careful about how I describe this moment, because I think it is really important to be careful. This money, this work on addressing homelessness, is still really important. It requires significant investment, and the level of investment is not likely to go down quickly over the next few years because of the scale of the crisis that previous leadership here in the city allowed to grow unchecked for so long. And so we have to make a big investment. And unlike many people who are publicly commenting about the audit, I actually read every page of the audit, and the audit actually said two things. One was that there was no connections between the dollars that were spending on homelessness and outcomes. What is the performance of those dollars? Lhasa wasn't monitoring that. That's why I'm so excited about the work that we've already been undertaking through performance management and oversight that I hope will be housed at LAHD going forward. This council approved that a few weeks ago, and I'm hoping that that work is enshrined there. But the work that we can do through that performance management and oversight function is actually connecting the dollars that we're spending to outcomes. How many people are moving off the street? How many of the units that are building are filled? How are we ensuring that people who are getting indoors are staying indoors? And once we have that data, some of which we already have and are already making improvements to the system on the basis of, once we have that data, we can actually have a much better system in which every dollar is connected to improvements to the lives of people who are on our city streets. Ultimately, that is our focus and that is our goal, because that goal is really important for LA, and the voters, over and over again, have told us that that goal is really important. Second, the audit, while it didn't actually uncover evidence of fraud, it did uncover something really troubling, which is poor financial controls at Lhasa. So, for example, Lhasa would make payments out to service providers, but didn't have processes in place to go out and ensure that those services were being provided in a field, kind of visit kind of way. They didn't ensure that the number of case managers that were supposed to be at sites were there. They didn't ensure that the number of meals that were supposed to be provided at interim housing sites were being provided regularly. And without that kind of checking, there was not clarity on how the money was being spent. So I just want to say something to everybody around this body. This work, this moment, where the county has pulled Measure A funds out of Lhasa, and now we have to figure out how we spend our dollars, also offers us an opportunity to right these wrongs, to make sure that we have performance management and oversight, and to make sure that we have real financial controls that allow us to track the dollars to the services that are being provided. But I do want to say that that will require investment. Accounting, oversight, data tracking, all of that costs money. And I hear far too often people who complain with one breath that Lhasa's administrative costs are way too high and we should be cutting them even though they're at 2% off our contracts, and with the other breath saying that they don't track their money enough. So if we're gonna do this, we have to make the investment to get it right. And now we have an opportunity to do that, so I want to encourage every single person to support that work, to figure out how much it costs for effective management, and to really invest in it so that we can make the most of the investments that we're making across the system. So thank you, and I hope I will get your eye vote, and I'm fine with these amendments.
The county shall provide for all. And where are we in that milieu? We're not gonna be in a position, I think morally, where we say we're gonna walk away from it, we're gonna lean into it, like we have for 32 years, but maybe lean into it with eyes wide open as to what are their obligations that they are avoiding, and what are our obligations that we're going to take on voluntarily?
All right, we're taking up that item as amended, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate to vote.
15 eyes.